Welcome to the December 5th regular meeting of the Littleton City Council. We'll do a roll call.
Mayor Brinkman.
Here.
Mayor Protem Valdez.
Present.
Councilmember Cole.
Here.
Councilmember Driscoll. Councilmember Elrod. Councilmember Fay.
Here.
And Councilmember Schlafter.
Here.
Will you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Council, we have one agenda change this evening on our ordinances on first reading, letter D ordinance regarding the trust agreement for Colorado firefighters' heart and cancer benefits trust that has been removed. Staff has indicated that there's still a great number of unanswered questions. It's not an urgent issue that needs to be dealt with today, and they felt as though with the decisions that need to be made regarding fire, we should probably move through that a little bit before we deal with this issue. So that's going to be moved to an undetermined date. Okay? Any other changes on the agenda? Okay, it is approved with one change. This is now the time for public comment. We have a green sign-up sheet in the back, and the public is invited to come down and speak on. Tonight, we don't have any public hearings, so invited to speak now on any issue, including any issue that's on the agenda. You have three minutes. The clock is in front of me. When you get to 30 seconds, we'll have a warning, and then in three minutes, you'll need to have wrapped up. First speaker, John Brackney, and the three minutes is really in effect.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Brackney.
Honorable members of the council, what an honor to be in front of you tonight. For the newcomers, I'm John Brackney. I live at 6038 South Clayton Street over in Centennial, but for old-timers, 50-year-olds and above, Littleton is really a bunch of our hometowns, so to speak. First, thank you for your public service. I've been involved in public policy for now over 30 years, and I realize that oftentimes when contentious issues, we forget that you're public servants. There's one thing that should unite us, and that's swearing to uphold the Constitution. I've had the privilege of doing that five times, twice as, well, three times as an elected official, as a county commissioner, and then as a member of the Centennial Charter Commission writing that Constitution, and then twice, once as an enlisted person and once as an officer in the United States Army. Thank you for your public service. Never get too upset at your citizens or each other that you don't realize that we're all in this together. Again, thank you. So I'm here briefly tonight, and I still have two minutes and 45 seconds. How exciting. Oh, I don't. Fair enough. Well, I'll go quick. I'm here representing an organization called Metro Energy. What do people in Littleton think about energy, oil and gas extraction, solar, geothermal, wind? Well, a lot. In fact, almost everything I know about the Denver-Julesburg Basin was from one of the state's subject matter experts that lives right over in Kettering Park and has for 40 years. He's one of the state's premier scientists and engineers on all the extraction going up in Weld County. My organization, I'm center-right, but my partner is center-left. Some of you know Brenda Morrison and Rut Bridges, the founders of the Bighorn Leadership Institute. We have decided to take in all of the above energy policy and bring people together of different viewpoints to truly understand international, national, state, and local public policy regarding oil and gas drilling, solar, the grid, et cetera, et cetera. We're asking one of you, currently the mayor of Cherry Hills is going through, as well as the mayor of Inglewood, is going through an eight-week course, Friday and a Saturday, for four months. We're going to do another cohort in the spring or fall, and we're asking one of you if you're interested in energy policy to go through that with us. And if one of you are not interested, we ask you to find a key business leader or a community leader to represent Littleton in a statewide, different way to approach public policy and energy rather than the adversarial system of we hate each other. We shouldn't hate each other on this stuff. We should figure out the best way to increase our economic development and our quality of life for all of our citizens, and I should be done, don't you think? Good. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, John. Pam Chadborn.
Hi, I'm Pam Chadborn. Hopefully, I live a block and a half from here. Hopefully, this isn't adversarial, but I am going to point out a concern I have. So at the last meeting, when the change of council was happening and the recognition of the council members who were leaving, there was an announcement that, let's see if I say this right, there was going to be an additional presentation. Citizens had asked for time to make recognition also, and he said this group may give us candy. Councilmember Sunanik said, "We appreciate cash," and I'm sure that was a joke. However, I'm going to note that the four individuals who spoke, the four men who spoke, spoke about their organization at far greater length than they spoke about any recognition to any of the departing council members. I'm also going to note that of our new council members, Councilmember Driscoll received, if I'm correct, $2,250 from three of the individuals who spoke that night. Councilmember Elrod, who I also don't see, received $1,500 from two of them and possibly $750 more from one of their businesses. And Councilwoman Schlafter received $850 from three of them, as far as I could tell. And I will stand corrected on this if anybody gives me that information. I will also go back and check. I was hoping to get someone else to check my information. I'm very concerned about special access for special interests, and this raised all the red flags for me. For one thing, I'm going to suggest that it was out of order, and I'm sure that was well-intentioned, and I'm also sure that it was bad in its effects. All groups should be given access to public comment, and that's where those folks should have spoken. If there's an opportunity to recognize the outgoing council members, that should be equal for all of us. And the rest of us didn't know there was an opportunity to do that. In fact, the city clerk tried to stop an Inglewood council member from speaking after that. We did not have equal access to that opportunity. So I'd like for that kind of comment to be restricted to public comment. And for two, when you folks talk about the protocol discussion, please consider making rules for special interest groups for access to staff and to you. Most of these folks are not residents. An American government is set up so that the people who live in the place should have a strong say. Special interest groups should also have a say, but it should be in public and equal access to us. So please consider that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Pam. No one else has signed up. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak? Seeing no one, we'll move on to the agenda. Consent agenda, we have two items. Resolution, our first item is item A, a resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement between the city of Littleton and the city of Centennial for pavement rehabilitation on South Broadway between West Cayley Avenue and East Arapaho Road. Item B is approval of the November 21, 2017 regular minutes. I need a motion.
Motion, was that made?
Just motion to approve consent?
Yep, a motion to approve the consent, A and B.
And I need a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve consent. Agenda items A and B. Council, vote, please. All in?
The vote is... Somebody's voting, I can't hear. Corina's is...
I didn't push anything.
I know you didn't.
It just came up as yes. No, I mean for my own vote.
Oh.
Didn't do anything, it just came up.
Okay, well, it was already at yes, so if you want to vote no, now it's no.
I don't.
The motion carries five to zero unanimously.
Thank you. Okay, our next agenda item is ordinance on first reading. Any of, on these ordinances, no, you can't pull them, never mind. Ordinance on first reading, number A, letter A, ordinance on first reading amending title three, chapter nine, sections three dash nine dash one dash two, comma, three dash nine dash three dash two, comma, three dash nine dash one dash 10, and three dash nine dash six dash 12 of the city code enacting and implementing standardized sales and use tax definitions. Council, do you have any questions, or would you like any staff information?
I just have one comment, and for the city attorney, and I asked you at the study session, so the answer has no doubt changed. I just want for the public to know that what this is doing is just, it's definitions only, and this is not changing anything else.
Mayor Protem, members of the council, that's correct. One of the things that cities across the state that collect their own sales tax are attempting to do is create standard definitions. So the definition is the same in Littleton, as it would be in Centennial, as it would be in Denver, as it would be in Fort Collins. And that is, all this is doing is bringing our definitions into those standards. It is not a policy change under the Taxpayer Bill of Rights. It does not, it's not intended to increase revenue or make something taxable that isn't. It's just to create these standard definitions, which will be a benefit to both individuals and businesses because the same definitions will apply in every city that collects its own tax.
Thank you very much.
That, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Council, I need a motion. Do you have a question?
I have a concern, and it comes under Tabor. I didn't find much of this that gave us a whole lot of information about how Tabor would look at this, and I know I should have brought this up at the study session. It was my first meeting, and I didn't quite get it. Anyway, it seems that there is no hurry to do this in considering the possible penalty to the city if we get this wrong, and if someone did find that this was in error and change through a definition, and Peggy brought this up at the study session, I think, that in roundabout way, that there could be, taxation could be changed by change of definition or the change, or the list of exemptions. And the penalty, it seems, is fairly high. So I would like to suggest that we take our time and really look at this from a Tabor point of view to avoid making an error that we're sorry about later.
Councilmember Fay, members of the council, this has been looked at by both the Colorado Municipal League as well as every city that's adopted it from, and in fact, I've also looked at it from a Tabor point of view. Tabor does come into play if we were to make tax policy changes that result in an increase in revenues. None of these tax policy changes are designed to result in an increase in revenue. None of these are going to make something taxable that is not taxable. They are just changing the definitions. In regards to sort of the second issue, there is a bit of urgency on this, and the urgency comes from the fact that the legislature has had a tax study committee, and there's been a lot of arguments being made that Colorado should adopt the same types of policies that have been adopted in a number of states, including Arizona, where sales tax was made a matter of statewide importance and the state preempted local governments. One of the issues that the municipal league has committed to was to work with all of the self-collecting cities in Colorado to adopt these standard definitions as a way of showing that the cities are concerned with the difficulties taxpayers face. For both the council and the audience, the legislature goes back in the session on January 5th, so there will be a tension on the cities in terms of how they've handled this. Having come from a state, Arizona, where this very type of thing unfolded, I have to tell the council, it's very, very critical that we do this. City sales tax, cities is what pays the bills. Property tax does not pay city bills, sales tax does. And if cities do not demonstrate this willingness to look at their tax codes and make them more workable, I think we will be at the same risk as in other states of having our sales tax authority impinged, and I think that is a significant risk to the city.
I've looked into, now, I'm no attorney, you are, so right away, I admit to that, but I looked into the legalities that I could find, and I didn't find anything in the Constitution that says the state can do that to a home rule city. And so I'm still concerned that, even though I hear your urgency, that I would like to make absolutely sure we look more deeply into the Tabor ramifications. I don't believe Arizona has Tabor or anything like that, and so they, and whatever they did, you're using them as an example of what we should do, they didn't have the Tabor seriousness that we have.
And councilmember, I can tell you that a number of the premier people in this state who have been involved in Tabor, because this is, there's 53 cities that self-collect totally, and then there are some other cities that do it in part, this is a fairly broad item, and I'll use Arizona as an example, we actually do have a structure very much like Tabor. Issue is, is that the state constitution does allow the legislature to declare a matter of statewide importance, which then preempts our home rule authority. And the risk here has been, there has been this idea promoted that perhaps in the future, sales tax should be declared to be exactly that. And so that's the reason for my concern, and I'd be happy to answer any other questions.
Thank you.
One more question. We would not be the first city to adopt this, there's other Colorado cities that have done so?
That's correct. There's been 22 of the cities so far that have adopted it. We would be number 23, and there's a number of cities lined up behind us to do this.
Any other questions?
No, but an observation. So if one of the cities that is adjacent to us does have this, and we don't, in my mind, it might encourage people not to do business, bring their products, et cetera, to us so that they wouldn't have to go through a different set of reporting standards.
Councilmember Cole, that's exactly one of the principles that is underlying this change. The business community has said, listen, this is impossible to have 53 different definitions that are all defining one thing. How am I supposed to know whether it's taxable in Centennial, not taxable in Littleton, taxable in Lakewood? And so I think your concern is absolutely well-placed, which is that if this, if Littleton was to simply say, no, we're not going to adopt these definitions, businesses would then say, okay, there's 50 other cities that have standardized definitions, that's where I'll go. It's too much trouble to go to a city that doesn't have the standard definitions. Why put myself at risk for audits? Why put myself at risk for enforcement? I'll just pass.
Any other questions? Council, I need a motion.
I move to approve ordinance 352017, amending title three, chapter nine, sections three dash nine dash one dash two, comma, three dash nine dash three dash two, comma, three dash nine dash one dash 10, and three dash nine dash six dash 12 of the city code enacting and implementing standardized sales and use tax definitions on first reading, and to schedule a second reading and public hearing for December 19, 2017.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Second one's from Peggy.
Peggy.
Ready to vote?
Yep.
The vote... Wait a minute. There we go. The vote is four in favor, with councilmember Fay voting no. The motion carries four to one.
Okay, moving on to item B, which is an ordinance on first reading, amending ordinance number 21, series of 2016, known as the Annual Appropriations Bill for All Municipal Purposes for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2017, and ending December 31, 2017. Council, are there any questions? Okay, I need a motion, please.
I move to approve amending on first reading ordinance number 21, series of 2016, known as the Annual Appropriation Bill for All Municipal Purposes for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2017, and ending December 31, 2017, and schedule the second reading and public hearing on December 19, 2017.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Ready to vote?
The vote is five in favor. The motion carries unanimously.
Item number C, an ordinance on first reading amending the 2017 Emergency Medical Transportation Enterprise Budget. Council, any questions? Need a motion, please?
I'll make a motion. I move to approve the ordinance on first reading adopting and entering into a trust agreement for the Colorado firefighters' heart...
Nope.
No, I'm on the wrong one.
Why not?
There you go.
That's why I didn't read the last one, I was on the wrong one. Somebody take over, Kyle.
All right, I move to approve the amendment to the Emergency Medical Transport Enterprise Fund 2017 budget on first reading and schedule a second reading and public hearing on December 19, 2017.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, second by Peggy. Council, ready to vote?
Yep. There we go.
The vote is five in favor. The motion carries unanimously.
We have no ordinances on second reading, no public hearings, we have nothing on the agenda for general business, so that takes us to comments and reports. City manager, do you have any report?
Mayor Brinkman, I do not.
Good. I mean, thank you. Thank you.
The mics are on.
Carol, do you have a report? Councilmember Fay.
District Three is going to have its, a meeting on January 20, so the first one of 2018. It will be 9:00 to 10:00 a.m. at the Wilmore Garden Center, that on County Line Road, that's a Saturday morning. And we have Mark Relf, who is going to answer questions and concerns from the citizens. I want to report that we've made great progress with Mark Relf's help and also Jocelyn's and Keith's for getting a pathway for citizens at Littleton Village to be able to get their questions answered about the problems that they've identified there, and so they now have a clear pathway to get the answers. And then finally, I have gotten many questions from people as I go to the Buck Center and other places about, are we going to make our decision about the firefighters and the EMTs and all of that soon? And I want to say that none of us, in my opinion, has the information we need to make a decision yet. And so until we get that information, and I believe there is a lot of it to be gotten, that I at least won't be making a decision. Thanks.
Thank you. Kyle?
I do not.
Okay. Councilmember Cole?
None.
Yes, just one comment for the city clerk, or maybe it's for the manager, I'm not sure. At our last study session, where a resident had come up and talked to me, and I believe you were part of that conversation to the city manager, about the minutes, meeting minutes for unrecorded meetings such as the breakfast joint meetings, those kind of things, where can the citizens get information regarding those?
Well, we, according to the council protocols, we do put together summary notes of some of your breakfast meetings, and I think, in fact, I just handed out this evening here the summary notes there from the joint meeting with Highlands Ranch and the Littleton Fire Protection District. The clerk does have a copy, so if somebody's interested, we certainly could share that. As a matter of practice, we don't necessarily put together detailed minutes of other meetings outside of your regular meeting study session. One other exception to that is the annual joint meeting with the city of Inglewood over the wastewater treatment plant, and that's an audio recording. So if there is something specific that somebody's looking for, then we, obviously, we'd be more than happy, the city clerk's office could help them with that, but generally, that's kind of how we manage the minutes currently with your protocols.
So when a citizen has a question or wants to know what went on at the meeting, contact the city clerk, and the city clerk could provide information there.
Yes, I would say that's probably the most efficient way to get an answer. The clerk's office obviously manages that, not just for those, the council, but obviously all of our boards and commissions as well.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. And my only comment regarding reports is that I need counsel, those who have not given me their goals for 2018, please send those to me by the end of the week. And that's, that's it. And that's, that's it. So we will adjourn and move to the community room for a study session regarding fire and emergency medical services discussion, and we will begin that discussion at 7:05. We're adjourned. Thank you.